Welcome, everyone, to the regular city council meeting of July 8th. I hope everyone had a great Fourth of July, and it's kind of nice. We seem to be getting a little more rain than was expected. It's keeping it green. I'm not sure how much it's really doing for our hydrology, but that's a good thing. We're going to go right into the meeting. So Nicole, would you call the roll, please?
Counselor Benedetti?
Here.
Counselor Doyle?
Here.
Counselor Guth?
Here.
Counselor Rose?
Here.
Mayor Richards?
Here. Thank you. We have no scheduled appearances, public appearances, today. So we would go straight to citizen comments and petitions. This is a time for members of the public to address us on items not on tonight's agenda that do not have a public hearing, or that do have a public hearing. Items that are action items, we're happy to take comments on, and any other items that are of concern to the citizens. So who would like to go first? And we ask you to keep your comments to about three minutes.
Let's see if I'm getting any better at this. Mayor Richards, members of city council, thank you.
And just identify yourself for the record.
I'm Francis Duckens.
Thank you, Francis.
You're welcome. Let's see. I understand that the preferred alternative entrance into town is a go after a reassessment That's awesome. You know, I mean, I'm glad I get to vote on these things, and I'm glad that you're all doing what you're doing. And thanks for the greenness, by the way.
Thank you.
And the rain. Yeah, and the weather. I'm still contending that City Market Beer and Wine Sales are hurting our independent businesses like Carl's. And I worked there, and you know, it's been here. If you grew up here or spent any time in Aspen, you know, we don't feel like it's fair to a business that's been in town so long. And there's four other wine sales and liquor sales. That and also, you know, I mean, I'm not against City Market. They have what we need, but they took away a lot of the bread that used to be by the produce, and the shelves are always bare by the end of the day. And, you know, I'm glad we have a lot of people here. Independence Day, there's a lot of business, and I'm glad we're taking care of that. I don't know, but I think they should have recycling and composting, too. Or let us know what they're doing with all the compost, especially since they raised the price of those little bags that you can get for a dollar for produce now that it's a dollar fifty. I like my tomato sandwiches. Okay, Aspen Daily News, thank you. Thank you for your columnists. They are outstanding, and I really get a great buzz from Max Meralt and Annaliese Gruder and Steve.
You mean Roger Meralt.
Did I say Max?
You did. You said his father's name.
I wrote Max. Oh, well, I apologize, but yeah. And, you know, Annaliese's column about independence and not being afraid to make changes was inspiring. We saw her at the Writers' Aspen Words, Summer Words, and she did a little presentation. Awesome stuff. Social consciousness, what will you do with all that money?
Which money?
I'm just thinking of all the folks who come here with the big bucks. Let's have some social consciousness. You know, going along with Albert Schweitzer Day, that was proclaimed, what was it, July 1st? It was great. Thank you.
Yep, thank you so much. I appreciate your time. Let me just answer one thing for you. I did work at City Market there for a while, and they have a composting bin in the back. I mean, it's its own compactor, separate from their trash compactor, and they have a cardboard compactor. They collect cardboard. And I'm not going to say that everything gets in there, but when the fellows are there who cut up the pre-sliced pineapple and watermelon and things like that, those rinds are getting recycled. And so they are working on that, you know, to the extent every business in our community is.
And the bag thing, if we could compost bags, too, that'd be awesome, especially if you can, like, take a lunch bag like we used to in school.
We do have plastic bags, soft plastic bag recycling right outside the front of this building here for members of all the public. I use that, too, with my husband, and I think it's outside the door because sometimes the cheese bags can start to smell a little funny. But we do collect plastic, soft plastic composting bags, you know, the ones you end up getting out of town downstairs.
That's really good. I still, I believe we need a community forum for discussions like this, too. And I like the idea of a meeting room or a space at the Armory. It doesn't necessarily have to be cannabis consumption, but we had a thing in both papers.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to go back into other issues, Francis, because...
Oh, I've gone beyond my three minutes?
Yeah. You finished your three minutes. I was just trying to answer your one question about City Market composting.
Well, thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate you showing up. Tony?
Good evening, everyone. For the record, my name is Toni Kronberg, and I wanted to pick up where I left off last night. I wasn't able to finish my comments. And what the comment that I was going to make was that a reevaluation either results in a new environmental impact study, or the record of decision remains valid. I'm looking forward to Jacobs Engineering, the public open houses, where the public gets the opportunity to comment on the different designs and things that are brought forward. Last night, it was an agreement that a purpose and need statement can be changed during a new EIS. It can also be changed during a reevaluation of the 1998 Record of Decision. That's what I'm looking forward to. One of the most disappointing things last night was when you decided to only go to Buttermilk to take a look at solving the transportation. Many of us have worked very hard to go all the way to Brush Creek Park and Ride, being the 21st Coalition, the Transportation Coalition for the 21st Century. The city council, in your retreat, you wanted to go to Brush Creek, Picking County Commissioners, Snowmass, the Electoral Officials Transportation Committee. You blew our dreams last night by not going all the way to Brush Creek. I want to thank Bill, very much want to take the opportunity to say thank you very much for taking a look at the whole picture and wanting to spend a little bit more time, a little bit more money on those of us that have to sit in traffic in the morning, 20 minutes. We now have no solution. We now have no way to tackle the airport traffic, the new lumberyard housing project, ABC. So where do we go from here? I'm asking you that question because that's still within the city of Aspen. Should be the Picking County Commissioners pick up where you dropped off? Then the next thing is that one of the things that's really annoying is when I hear things at the table, your table, and we can't respond to it. And as you know, one of my pet peeves is the fact with the referendum two ballot question, when it's been said over and over again, the voters approved the preferred alternative. They did not approve the preferred alternative. What they did was either the new Record of Decision or the old one. And I would appreciate it if you could take credit for your decision to choose between the two. The voters didn't choose. You are choosing based on what you've heard within the community. And for me, I am very, Rachel, you know me for years, I'm very, very sensitive about our rights as citizens and the fact that we really have to be accurate with our voter language. The Silver Bullet, Christine, you gave me the name for the project that we're going to keep moving forward on, but one of the questions where I got kind of annoyed, so to speak, was when you asked, was there an alternative back in the 1998 Record of Decision that was not evaluated, that was not vetted? The answer from Jacobs Engineering was, oh, no, we can't think of anything that, you know, wasn't vetted. The aerial connection was not vetted in the 1998 Record of Decision because the elected officials at that time didn't like the way that it looked. That is a viable mass transportation system, believe it or not, that connects the airport, 10 parking lots, four ski areas, the town of Snowmass, and Aspen Village. It has the capability of taking 5,000 cars off the road every single day.
Your time is up now.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it. I think I got all my points in. But thank you. But again, keep on, keep on.
Thank you, Tony.
Thank you.
Is there anyone online for a comment? No, anyone else in the room? Okay, we will close the citizen comments and petitions and move on to special orders of the day. We start with council members and mayor's comments. Council members, anyone want to jump in? It's not quite board report yet.
Right, still have that to look forward to.
I know.
Yeah, I just wanted to comment on, again, the rain we got right before the Fourth of July, I think was really welcome, getting town a little freshened up before a fantastic Fourth of July. I actually marched in the parade with the Sister Cities, so I got to see it, the whole parade from start to finish. And I was amazed at how many people lined the streets. There were so many people in town. I also noticed how much of our city staff was working that day. So I want to give a shout out to Parks and Rec, the Wheeler Opera House, our special events staff, and I'm sure the Aspen Police Department were working extra shifts as well. I really also enjoyed the walkable downtown afterwards, and I would really be interested to see if we could experiment with that concept a little more somehow. I know that'd be difficult to do, but I'd be interested in looking into it because I think a lot of people enjoy a walkable downtown. And let's see, I also wanted to comment on the Albert Schweitzer celebrations. It was very, very well attended and really makes you think about what Aspen is all about and why we have such a special place. That's it.
Very good. Thank you, John. Bill?
Nothing, thanks.
Christine?
Just to say, there's a lot going on in town. I wanted to give kudos specifically to some of the music. Jazz Aspen put on a great June Fest. The Music Fest started their season, and the mariachi night they had last week was really special. The Belly Up Concert in the park for Fourth of July was fantastic, and I really, I think the community really appreciated it. And then just kudos to the city on Fourth of July. I thought the drone show was fun, and it was just good vibe downtown, so thank you.
Sam?
Nothing.
Rachel?
Yep.
I did have one more thing, I'm sorry. We got this memo, all of us, but it's a public service announcement. The city of Aspen was recognized for climate action initiatives, earning a top score from the CDP for the second consecutive year. City of Aspen has been recognized with an A score from CDP, the global nonprofit that operates the world's only independent environmental disclosure system. Out of 973 cities that reported, only 15% earned an A, meaning that Aspen is one of 112 cities worldwide to receive the top score in 2024. To receive this designation, the city of Aspen had to meet high sustainability standards and publicly report key environmental data, including submitting a citywide emissions inventory, a climate risk and vulnerability assessment, and a published climate action plan. I think that's enough about that, but I want to thank our climate and environmental team for getting us to this point and continuing to work on this most important issue facing us, actually. Thanks.
Thank you. I would like to make a small announcement for public participation, that the city of Aspen is hosting a community discussion on water-wise landscaping that will have free seeds, expert insights, and refreshments offered. This is going to be on Thursday, July 17th, at 5:30 to 6:30 p.m. in the Aspen Police Department Community Room on Main Street, 540 East Main Street. And you can discover how to create a beautiful water-wise landscape with guidance from Darren Davidson, Sustainable Landscape Specialist with the Colorado State Extension. This talk will explore practical tips on soil, water, plant choices, and more to help you garden smarter and more sustainably. This is really important, given that we are in stage one water restrictions, and we'd like to see all future plantings to be as water-wise as possible. It's a crucial strategy as our region faces ongoing water challenges. They will be complimentary refreshments and treats, and the first 20 guests will get free perennial seeds to inspire their own water-conscious gardening efforts. And it's great for the bees. So everyone who needs a little help with their gardening, that is going to be, again, Thursday, July 17th, from 5:30 to 6:30 p.m. And I actually would like to just make a kind of personal comment. I've been sick over the past three weeks, GI tract infections come and gone. And so for anyone out there listening or watching who I've missed your phone call or have been late returning some emails, I apologize. All the days we didn't have meetings or other things, when I could have caught up, I just couldn't. And so pretty much back in action, and we'll be leaving tomorrow night to go represent the city at the Club 20 Policy Committee meetings in Gunnison on Thursday and Friday. But that is all for comments. I did miss the incredible Fourth of July, and I'm glad that so many others enjoyed it, and I wish I could have participated a little more fully. We will now move on to any agenda amendments?
No.
There are none tonight? Thank you. And then city managers' comments.
I'm just going to layer on the kudos and praise to the staff and the organization for the Fourth of July. The Streets Team was the other major player that certainly came through at the end with Parks Team and really cleaned up the venue from start to finish. Did an amazing job. The police and the events team really did an incredible amount of work on preparation and delivery during that time. So it was a very big effort across the organization, and well done.
Thank you. Very good. Now we will move on to council member board reports. Who would like to start with that? Sam?
Yeah, I attended a Nordic council meeting on June 25th, and I think the highlight to bring back the council is we're talking about a snowmaking proposal. It was a successful trial back in the 2018-19 season for obvious reasons, increased climate variations over the years. There's two areas where they're looking most thoroughly at, the golf course and the AVSC race loop behind the high school. Need water sources, and we think we have one for the golf course, and we might be able to tap into the Highlands Pump House for the AVSC loop. The golf course would cost around $3.33 million, and then $51,000 operating annually. The high school loop would be $4.3 million to get going, and $129,000 operating annually. With that, still very much in discussion on this, from some climate studies, it says the Aspen Eco Region is projected to see a decrease in snow water equivalent of 65% to 80% and snow residency time of 40% to 50% for years 2025 to 2060. But there should be sufficient temperature windows before Christmas until the year 2090. And it would take 18 to 24 months of permitting review for both locations each.
That's a very interesting concept. It has pretty big dollars attached to it. We would really need to have a more thorough discussion with the larger budget. I believe that's funded through the county's Open Space Fund. So it is equally shared with Aspen, Picking County, and Snowmass, so that's the North Star and then all the rest, to have an understanding of would there be future asks for Snowmass Village Trails for snowmaking? And at what point are we be fighting the inevitable and trying to maintain something? I certainly could see it in the short term, but I had no idea that snow guns were that expensive.
Yeah, I mean, the golf course, one seems a little more logistically feasible for water and cost. The $51,000 annually after you set it up doesn't seem as bad when you compare the two. But yeah, it's about trying to make sure we have Nordic skiing long into the future.
Oh, I believe in it. I just, you know, you kind of wonder, do we need to move the trails to different locations where they're more shaded or other things like that?
That was the discussion the last time, was talking about triage and trying to put the trails in places that have, like, greater shaded areas, or maybe focusing more on something like North Star Preserve or trails up the pass where there is snow deeper into the winter. So both things are happening at the same time.
That sounds like a great conversation, and I imagine our Parks Department, at some levels, a little connected through the golf course and others, but they might be able to talk about some tree planting through their department that would help out with that shading.
Potentially.
Take a look at that. Any other?
That's it for me.
Christine, nothing this time? John?
Well, Rachel and I attended a Colorado Municipal League Conference in Breckenridge 10 days ago or so, a three-day conference, and I was going to report on the wildfire resiliency code, Dark Sky Initiative, and extended producer responsibility. Do you want to start?
You go ahead.
Okay. So these conferences are really cool. You get to attend these hour, hour-and-a-half-long seminars that are very informative. So I attended one on the statewide wildfire resiliency code, which our city council must adopt by next April 1st. It doesn't apply to 35-acre or more parcels. There is a state map involved. You can check out on the state of Colorado's wildfire resiliency code website. It's pretty eye-opening to look at it. I was sharing it with our city manager, and Aspen is essentially surrounded by moderate to high-level fire danger.
fire danger surrounded. I think it's important for us to start to consider a Class A roofing ordinance. Colorado Springs has experienced several wildfires, and they did that in 2003. There are no wood products allowed on roofs. They also did some vegetation and structural hardening, and then moved it to decks and fencing, which means no more wooden decks, no more wooden fences. There are also wildfire grants available, and there are also links on that website. I also attended a Dark Sky seminar, which we've talked about at this table, and I think it's super important for us to pursue it. Light pollution, whatever you want to call it, skyglow, glare, or light trespass, it's really harmful to birds. 70% of birds migrate, and 80% of those birds migrate at night, and birds have experienced a 28% population loss, migratory birds, since 1970. That's 2.5 billion birds lost since 1970. Anyway, I'd like to pursue that as quickly as possible, and it was pointed out that Flagstaff, Arizona, was one of the first to get this done, and they're a city of 76,000 people, so if they can do it, I know we can. And then the last thing I want to talk about is the extended producer responsibility, which is a program, a state program where producers, I'm gonna use Coca-Cola as an example, they pay into a fund that is used to help collect and recycle the waste that they produce. There is a new Colorado State Initiative called the Circular Action Alliance, and that's where the dues are paid into by the producer. And the CAA makes sure compliance, creates the plan, manages the program for paper and packaging. The goals are to raise recycling rates from 25% in 2022 to 41% in 2030 and 55% by 2035. Recycling should be as convenient as solid waste. And yeah, local government will complete the request for reimbursement for those costs, and the program is 100% voluntary. That's all I've got from CML.
Thank you. Well, I really, if you've ever been to the conference, there's always multiple presentations going on at the same time, and I did not attend the Dark Sky, but when I was in Sun Valley in the past, they were an early Dark Sky community as well, and so I'm a little bit familiar with it. Would council members like to see if we could have some collected information about the larger program and what it means, and look at it as an information item, and then see if we'd like to have a work session about it going forward? I know John has expressed some interest in that.
Yeah, I would say it was pointed out that reasons for Dark Skies are residents want it, tourists like it, and visitors visit to view Dark Skies.
The only reason I would say no is because I think we already have that. I don't think we're missing anything there.
Well, it may be something that it's a regional group that we could join if we qualify already and say that we are a Dark Sky community as well. So, you know, let's kind of just take a look at it. There's nothing persing, there's nothing urgent, but it'd be nice to know that we are doing as much as we can. I know the county has codes, and there's supposed to be lighting that goes down, and they may have even updated their code to not be able, or is that us, not shine your lights on the river and things like that?
I was gonna say, I'm happy to get a refresher on it. I know the previous council, we updated the lighting ordinance, and I know this was brought up asking to be a Dark Sky Reserve, and there was some reason I cannot remember, so.
Yeah, maybe just to refresh the new members and see where that's at. Again, it's nothing urgent, but it's very much in line with the type of experience we'd like our guests to have when they're here, and our residents and our kids looking up there at shooting stars, so. Okay, back to the conference, I guess, then, is me. I attended a couple of different ones, and one that was most interesting was AI in government and what AI is starting to do. And it's not just about writing letters. There's a number of different management programs and things like that that can help with some fundamentals, and that's become very important in the time of housing and worker shortages for key positions. What was more interesting was what they said AI can do for businesses and what they can do with the business community, and they literally put a picture of a shop in there and then asked AI, how could they merchandise that shop better to promote better sales? And it just spit out a picture almost immediately of getting rid of the vertical elements that were blocking the view, and get them against the wall, and organize a little bit by specialty item instead of just so random, and so that was interesting. But then they talked about kind of creating a little bit of what we call a digital twin of a city or a town, and how to work the problems through this digital model of your town. And they said you feed in your GIS flyovers, you feed in your city codes, you could feed it in your data about jobs and employment and number of workers and housing units, you could feed in all your transportation-type numbers, and then test solutions in real time through the AI model. And I don't know, I will certainly bring this idea forward to the 21st Century Transportation Group, because it is a chance to experiment without experimenting in real life, might be the way to say it. If you had congestion pricing, how many more people would that potentially get on the bus? If you had a fare-free bus, how much more parking would you potentially need, and how much more revenue to run those new buses? Things like that. So that's the one thing I really wanted to bring back, was how do we, and I know we're using it some, but how do we prepare for the power? Not the misuse, but the innovation and creativity that AI might be able to bring to our organization in some of our most challenging issues. The other item was to listen to some of the states being interviewed on the Joint Budget Committee member, and then other members with what federal changes are going to do to the state of Colorado budget. And it was pretty awesomely bad in terms of the cutbacks. We know that the state was dealing with a $1.3 billion budget shortfall this year, and they Xed out almost all the reserve funds from severance tax. So that is a tax paid for taking minerals out of the ground, and a small amount of that goes back to support the communities where that activity takes place. Picken County's not a real loser in that area, but our neighbors in Garfield or Mesa or other counties on the West Slope really lose a significant amount of money to their little budgets. And that was just one area we saw where CDOT had the budget cut pretty significantly for the regional transportation authority's allocations, and unspent allocations were being pulled back. Further money that was granted, they're telling people, well, just put the project on hold, put it on ice, don't go any further, allocate the money, but don't go any further because if we tell the state it's allocated, maybe they won't cut it next year. I mean, it's really that bad. They've ended the revitalizing Main Street programs, which has been a source for affecting and helping our community. They've radically cut back the multimodal options program. And unfortunately, those are budgets that the state can continue to cut to balance the budget, because they're facing, in Colorado, projections based even on the old federal contributions, a $3 billion budget deficit for 2026. And so it's very concerning as to where the cuts will come from and what programs will be damaged. But there's just so much that has always been part of a state-federal partnership that is being broken. Money from the federal government that then Colorado distributed to all the state libraries is gone. Money that would go to certainly the Medicare program and the Medicaid program, and how do we make up for that? The money that would go to the SNAP, the Supplemental Nutrition Food Stamp Program, how or if Colorado makes up for that? There were some very, very good programs on the immigration enforcement, which our attorney attended and myself, and I think she's brought back a lot of valuable information for our police officers and our community of what lies within citizen rights and citizen protection, and what lies within the responsibility of law enforcement when they're dealing with the federal agents in our valley, in our community. So I would encourage all members to try to hold the calendar space and attend those conferences in the future. I realize it's really hard to break that much time away from work, other work, or family, but it can be a really great sharing of experience with other communities dealing with similar problems. And we will move on from there.
Rachel, do you mind if I add just a couple more comments?
Please.
Because I attended that same.
You take great notes, so you go ahead.
Funding the Future. Good news is municipal bonds are tax-exempt now, so that remains, and state and local taxes remain, so that's good for us. But the bad news is the Medicaid cuts and the SNAP cuts. Colorado's not in position to backfill any of the federal government cuts. For instance, $500 million in cuts to Medicaid in our state, and $120 to $240 million in cuts to the SNAP benefits, which keep underprivileged children eating.
And the real tragedy of that is that particularly the Medicaid, the rural hospitals, it doesn't just end with, oh, they're not getting their care anymore. Hospitals have to take someone coming through an emergency room, and they have to treat and stabilize and bring them to a certain level, but that's unpaid care. And so when they have to balance their books, the next year, they negotiate with the major insurance companies and the reimbursement rate changes, and the rate changes for everyone on a group policy, and the rate changes for everyone on a single payer policy, and the expenses are just passed around in a circle and are paid by the general public. And so we know we've already had some of the highest rates for a single payer policy, if you're not in a group employment, group employer. And the only reason those rates came down at all was because the state of Colorado bought a $250, $275 million reinsurance program, and that would attracted a few more insurers into our region. I don't know that the state will be able to afford that reinsurance program, which has kept our single payer rates even remotely affordable. We are about the most highest, most expensive region for insurance rates for a single payer in the country prior to this reinsurance program, which was hard fought to get for our citizens. So it's not a bright outlook in that sense, and we'll all end up picking up the tab somewhere. The additional items, we'll move on to the consent calendar. Our consent calendar tonight includes Resolution 82 and 93, series of 2025, related to storm pipe lining project. These are two major underwater arteries for keeping our system safe, and it's the interior lining of those as opposed to digging them up and replacing them en masse, which is far less destructive. The next item is Resolution 091, series of 2025, the Grant Award for Commercial Water Efficiency Challenge Rebate and Awards Program. And this is where we are now going to be committing a matching $75,000 to the $75,000 grant that we won from the Colorado Water Conservation Board, and it is a final piece of finishing the actions identified in the Roaring Fork Valley Watershed Plan. So we are all trying to reduce our water use. I think we've all read about or heard about the challenges on the Colorado River, and as everyone in this town knows, we do not have a reservoir. We depend on snowpack and surface flows, and so we cannot overuse those limited resources as the drying out and airification of the Colorado Plateau continues. The third item on our consent items is Resolution Number 94, series of 2025, and that is the contract for the Old Powerhouse Preservation. That is the renovation of the powerhouse down on the other side of the Rio Grande Park, which has previously housed the Acura offices. They have now moved temporarily up into the Armory, and we are preparing that building to be able to move offices out of the Main Street cabin so that we can turn that into affordable housing, and a few other offices that have been scattered across the city. So unifying the workforce there so it'll be more efficient and taking care of one of our major historic resources of city power. For those who don't know, that powerhouse was actually replicated in Kyoto, Japan. They had sent an engineer over to see this hydropower plant, and they went back and dug a three-mile canal to be able to run water through it, and replicated our structure back in the 1800s. So the final item will be our draft minutes of the meeting of June 24th. Are there any items that anyone on the board would like to pull or make comments on? Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I was gonna make a couple comments.
Okay, why don't you make the motion first, and unless we don't have to pull, we can make a comment.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
Okay, it's been made. Second discussion.
I just wanted to mention how excited I was about Resolution 91, the grant award for the Commercial Water Efficiency Challenge, and the fact that we're trying to manage our water use better. I think that's a great step in the right direction, and I'm excited about this grant. And also, I'm grateful that the powerhouse proposal, Resolution 94, includes a commitment to a full-time superintendent and project manager. That makes me feel better about this project.
Moving forward. Very good. Any other comments? I would just say good staff work bringing these to us. And Nicole, will you call the roll?
Counselor Benedetti.
Yes.
Counselor Doyle.
Yes.
Counselor Guth.
Yes.
Counselor Rose.
Yes.
Mayor Richards.
Yes, thank you very much. We have no notice of call-ups today. We have no first reading of ordinances. We have no public hearings. We do have some action items. So the first action item is to discuss Resolution 97, series of 2025, the West Mountain Regional Housing Coalition Good Deeds Program funding. Thank you all.
Okay, I'm just gonna get my slides up. All right, so Liz Axberg, Housing Policy Analyst in the City Manager's Office, and I'm here with April.
Hey, I'm April Long. I'm the Executive Director of the West Mountain Regional Housing Coalition.
And so today we brought you a resolution with a blank dollar amount, so that council can decide which amount to contribute to the Good Deeds Program. I do have some slides that are just an overview again of the organization and this program, but we kept it fairly high level since you received a presentation on this on May 12th, but we'll still go through all the information and happy to field questions before you make your decision as well.
Thank you.
So, as I said, the purpose of this is deciding on that dollar amount to put onto the resolution, that right now the recommended contribution is $1 million from the Coalition, and this covers around the cost of building affordable housing unit in Aspen. But in the previous year, 2024, the City of Aspen contributed $450,000 to this program, and we'll give some more information on that. So just as a reminder, that West Mountain Regional Housing Coalition is a nonprofit organization that the City of Aspen was involved with, one of the founding members of in 2022, and currently I represent the City of Aspen on the board of the organization as well. And so now we'll just give another overview of what the program actually is and how it works.
Okay, thanks. So the program that we're talking about that we launched in 2024 as a pilot was the Good Deeds Program. For this program, essentially the purpose of it is to buy homes off the free market and preserve them as affordable homes moving forward. So we do this by contributing 30% of the purchase price in the purchase of the home. We qualify applicants, and our qualifications are pretty simple. They must be employed locally within our region, and they must maintain that employment as they use. as they use the home. And they cannot own any other residential property to, in order to qualify, and they have to agree to never short-term rent the home, use the home as their primary residence. And so in exchange for that, oh, so we take a qualified buyer, they shop in the free market for a home. We have maximum purchase prices, purchase price, prices that vary geographically up and down the valley, and we would bring 30% of the purchase price for the home. They, the buyer brings 70% of that price. 3% of that 70 must be their own cash down payment. And the return for that 30% that we bring to the purchase is that they sign a deed restriction that locks the price of that home to a maximum resale price at the price that they paid for it, so at the 70%. If we're taking simple numbers in a million-dollar home situation, we would bring $300,000, the buyer would bring $700,000. If they sold it the next day, they could sell it for $700,000. If they sold it one year later, they could sell it for $721,000. We facilitate the resale to another qualified buyer. And so it's a 3% simple interest rate appreciation, and we do have a 10% allowance in capital improvements every five years.
Definitely. And I mean, the key thing here is that this is an affordable housing program that is taking a look at the issue regionally. So from here all the way to pass Glenwood as well versus, in the valley as a whole, there aren't a lot of opportunities in that besides APSHA all in all. So I'll just go over some of the contributions that we've seen in the program. So this was everything that the program received in 2024. As you see, the City of Aspen's $450,000, ranging to $1 million from Picken County. In April, you can add in, if I've missed any of the newer 2025 contributions on here, so.
The only thing I would say for 2025 contributions, the 1.45 million, the City of Glenwood Springs gave $100,000 with a three, in a three-year contribution cycle. So they're gonna, they agreed to give, they committed to give 3, $100,000 every year for the next three years.
Yeah, exactly. And Picken County, again, giving a million, $100,000 from Carbondale, and 250 from Snowmass. So now let's talk again about some of the impact that we've seen through the program as well.
Yeah, so with the first $2 million, we were able to purchase nine deed restrictions on nine homes that houses 13 working locals. And so in that, in those homes, we have 28 bedrooms, and the average price per home is about $250,000, our average price per deed restriction for the home. And the average, if you average that out per bedroom, it's almost $80,000 per bedroom. So also of note for you all in the City of Aspen, four of those 13 workers report to work in Aspen. Their incomes range, which was really interesting because we don't have income limits, we're not, we're verifying employment, but not, you know, we don't restrict on incomes. But the incomes of these employees range from 40% of the median income to 220% of the median income. We, when we were projecting this program out, we expected it to be really higher income earners, but we're seeing lower income earners participating in the program as well, which we think is a really big success. It's our goal to bring 30 homes into the program by 2026. With the 1.45 million that we've gotten this year, I just opened that, well, excuse me, 250,000 went to purchase a home earlier in the year. I just opened 1.22 million two weeks ago. We have three homes under contract already. I have two more with offers out that may go under contract tomorrow. So there is, as you can see, a very big demand for this program. People, we have 15 qualified households right now, and seven of them are actively shopping for homes in the region.
And I'll note, of those four who do report to work in Aspen, one is a City of Aspen employee. And also, I really appreciate some of the data that we've had in the past about the number of people who have taken up this program, who moved from rentals into these ownership situations. In a lot of ways, it kind of creates movement in the housing inventory as a whole as well.
Yeah.
Lastly, this was a specific request last time about getting just the full picture of what's being asked of the 150 housing development fund right now. So we have this list, and we detailed it out in the memo as well, some of the projections for the 150 fund in the coming years as well. So we have like the bigger one, we have Lumber Yard, we have Habitat that has come with a couple asks that will, you'll get more information on in the coming months. Right now, it's on the 88-unit apartment condo conversion. We're still finalizing what the actual number ask for that is. There's been talk of programs like moving assistance incentivized right sizing, the $3 million pledge to preserving those two mobile homes. We have the APSHA Essential Repairs Program, possible affordable housing at the Forest Service property. And then there's always the other things that will come up, like the mobile home preservation. It wasn't really a foreseen expense of the 150 fund, but as they come up, or same with land baking opportunities that come up, other affordable housing opportunities that come up that are applicable use of the 150 fund. So not an exhaustive list, but it helps at least show, here's all the things that we're kind of looking at from the 151 in the coming years.
Thank you. So, yeah, our request is for $1 million, as you can see, based on the demand that we don't have enough funding to supply those that are shopping right now. Additionally, you know, I, what I've seen is that their buyers are responsive to how much money we have, so they wait for the funding to come available, then they're getting qualified and going and shopping. So any amount that we can get and get the word out ahead of time allows people to position themselves into homeownership, right? So it's something you have to think about for a few months before you can get ready to do it, move out of your rental, save your down payment, things like that. And so there's definitely a need, and I think I've mentioned before, we don't, we haven't advertised this program. So this is all still being spread word of mouth. I think should we advertise the program, we would have a huge demand for it. And so we're kind of managing expectations of the community with what we're able to provide at this time.
Okay, Bill.
Thanks. A couple of, thanks for the presentation. Couple of logistical curiosities. So you file a deed restriction on an individual property when someone participates in this, right? In theory, that flags the property for future transactions, that this deed restriction exists, and there are certain things that they need to do. How are you tracking it, and what happens if somebody doesn't do those things that they're supposed to do in concert with the transaction?
So we do notify the properties assessor's office in Garfield County of the, of the properties. I am checking to see that the deed restrictions, we get records of the recordation, I'm checking to see that those are there. We have an annual recertification process, so those that have bought into the homes have to recertify every year with their employment and another affidavit saying that they're complying with the regulations and the deed restriction. And then those are the only tracking mechanisms we have for now. It's nine homes. I think that you and I discussed before, as we grow, we could expect to begin to use more software or a consulting company that does this type of tracking for us, working with other housing authorities to maybe partner on our needs or fee-for-service type option. But we, for now, just me, me checking to be sure that these are in compliance.
That's great. And yeah, I'm obviously not worried about it when it's you and, and, you know, you've created this program with guidance and can handle nine units, but in 50 years, you know, you're not involved and, and, you know, who knows who's doing a good job monitoring this? So I wonder if there's some kind of service provider that can monitor the status of these deeds and make sure that they aren't being transferred without your knowledge and consent and participation.
It should come up also on the title insurance.
Right, but, but as we've seen.
I understand. But that is one mechanism by which it could be discovered.
Make sure your microphone's a little closer when you're answering that.
Second one is, has, has your council who helped create that deed restriction given you confidence that in the event of a foreclosure, the deed restriction remains valid?
Yes.
Great. Thanks for all you're doing.
Thank you.
Good questions, Bill, and just kind of following up on that, who or to what entity is the deed restriction given to?
To the West Mountain Regional Housing Coalition.
Okay.
Or it's assigned. Should we, you know, if in the worst-case scenario, something happens to the coalition, then we would reassign our deed restrictions.
That's what I was going to ask, is it within the deed that it can be reassigned to another nonprofit or governmental entity?
Or a government.
Okay, that's standard language for nonprofit acquisitions of sorts, because sometimes they do change.
Yes.
Okay, very good. Other board member comments? John?
I totally support housing, and I think it's important that we support this. I think we should make sure this moves forward.
Yeah, I, I would agree. I'm supportive of regional efforts. We were an early founder. I think the, the real question is just the dollar amount, and we, we have had people say, well, that could create one home up here, you know, closer to work and potentially not driving. But it, there is, the other aspect is being a partner with a region that we're trying to bring along with us in terms of their own codes. This has been a sticking point for me in the past that, you know, we have pretty high mitigation requirements of all of our new commercial and subdivisions and things like that, and are we battling something within other jurisdictions and counties where they don't, or that they're, they're building more second home free market than the affordability will never keep up on? But I think that the only way you begin to crack through on policies is by staying at the table and being a partner in the efforts that are going forward. So we, I think this board in general supports this program, but I'd like to hear some people start throwing out dollars, knowing we, amounts that we do have some other potential items to look at. There's a lot of seeds we get a chance to plant across the valley that will help us close the gap. And this is one of those, it's a major one, it's really off the ground already. I think Habitat's doing some good work. And then, as we've said, the things like mobile home park preservations just pop up. I would think that last year's contribution is a bare minimum, 450. I don't know, I will throw out a little less than you were asking, but I would start by saying 600,000. Would anybody want to second that or make an argument for something else?
I'm supportive of a million. This makes a lot more sense to me than the mobile home conversations that we had for all the reasons that I explained during those meetings.
Okay, well, we got a top end at a million and a middle at the six, so let's see, you'll be good for at least six if, if others don't take the million.
I'm also supportive of a million. I like that this is development neutral and that it preserves housing for locals, so I'd like to give as much as we can.
Okay, we got a million?
Well, and that's the thing, I'd like to give as much as we can, too. I am concerned, though, about the other things that we have. I, I do feel like, you know, we keep looking at all these things in a vacuum, and they're all pretty holistic, and I, I'm concerned, especially about buying down deed restrictions that we have and other costs, especially if we're taking out debt issuance on some things like a lumberyard. It just is, it's sort of tough to have this, the mobile home park and Habitat ask for money at the same time, and why give that, all of it, but like, I don't necessarily feel, and this has nothing to do with West Mountain, that we're doing this as strategically as we should be doing.
Yeah, yeah, no, I understand that, and I had hoped that we would have had Habitat a little more prepared, but they've just had a shift in management and we're not prepared so that we could look at them all at the same time. And I think staff's kind of done what it can to say, these are our potential opportunities for you. But you're, you're absolutely right. We all, you know, we're fortunate, we have a real estate transfer tax that nobody else has in this valley. That's the bottom line. And they are making a good analysis of what it costs to build here versus maybe they could get two homes bought down with that or three. But do you have an amount, would you like to at least stay with last year's or 600,000?
I don't, I don't really feel like I can say an amount with confidence, honestly, so I'm, I'm listening to the rest of you all on this one. Just, and like, the one I'm pointing at the most is the deed restriction purchase, not program, but the expiring deed restrictions we have in our community.
Yeah.
The reason why I'm so hesitant is we haven't talked about that in a long time. A lot of it was done in executive session, and that's something I, I think from this conversation, I'd really want to refresher on to remember.
I think that's a good idea. I, I can understand that. It's, that's a really tough one, because I'll tell you, I have one of those expiring deed restrictions, but I think I would have to live another 30 years to see it happen.
That's what I'm trying to remember.
So we don't want to talk about this ugly side of it, that in the actuary tables, a lot of those we may not have to worry about.
Well, and then I'll be a little more strategic now, actually turn to Pete and just say, like, can we afford a million? And like, see what, see what the finance guy says, because it's not like I'm against the project, I just want to make sure we're doing it strategically.
I always ask tough questions, too, so I, I understand.
Yeah, Rachel seems to like to ask me about the financing as well and the 150 fund. The 150 fund obviously does have an existing fund balance, it's fairly significant, but as you noted, obviously, we're going out to borrow for some projects already with the lumberyard. So there is a bit of a give and take, for sure. Right now, we've penciled that we have about 30-ish million, even with, with the borrowing that we're going to do. 30 mil, 30 million roughly kind of set aside for other potential projects and things that need to come along. Some of them are listed on that list that are potential, that might need some of that 30 million, but there is room to do some of this, you know, consideration for some of these other efforts. So 600,000, a million, you can probably afford. If you have four requests for a million, it starts to get tighter and tighter as you're going for other potential options.
Let me ask you one more, just strategically. So 600,000 or a million, and I know we're going out for debt issuance for the lumberyard, but we wanted to keep a certain amount for other things anyway, so this is that, these, these other things, so at least that's coming out of a different bucket, even though it's not.
Yep.
Just to say that we shouldn't, I just want us to be pointed and say, we shouldn't spend a million dollars more on the lumberyard to do less debt issuance there. That's just not the strategy that we're going for.
Yeah, I think, you know, reducing the debt issuance by a million dollars isn't going to make a significant contribution overall to the, the reduction in, in interest payment, right? Or the duration of that, that debt. We will try to pay that debt off sooner, which will reduce some of those costs as well. So there are plans to try to mitigate even just doing the debt issuance to begin with. So I do think you have opportunities for things like this within that 30 million.
Well, in that case, I'm fine with a million this year, but I, I do want to say again, always very appreciative of all these initiatives, that it very much is year-to-year, depending on the finances and how the programs actually work, but I'm, I'm happy to do a million.
Yeah, I, I was just going to say, I think that's the one thing we all should keep in mind, is that there tends to start to be an expectation that a million will become the baseline for every year for the next 10 years, not, not just this year. And I don't think we can commit that with some of the other housing projects we have going forward. I wouldn't want to see a disappointment, well, Aspen's cutting back, you know, and that, that's how it gets framed.
Yep.
As opposed to Aspen really went big that one time, you know, and again, just being at this end of the valley, and as far as I know, you haven't been able to complete any of these purchases or buy downs within Aspen. And have any occurred within Picken County?
None yet. They have all been in Garfield County. We'll say one of the contracts that we're considering tomorrow is for an employee of an Aspen business and a Picken County airport employee. But it's still benefiting your employees.
Yeah, yeah, no, I understand. I'm just thinking about where and, and, you know, again, there's a legitimate argument about you're doing a good job helping build community in another community. You know, you're not building it in your own community from where your taxpayers are. John, you were coming up next?
Yeah, I want to match the board's enthusiasm for this. I'll, I'll go along with a million dollars.
All right. Well, I think we have consensus there, a majority, and I'm happy to support that as well. I just don't like to start the bidding high. So we will complete this resolution. If someone would like to take a look at that, my screen is turned off on me again because I wasn't doing it.
I'll make a resolution to pass, I'll make a motion to pass Resolution 97.
I'll second.
With the amount of one million?
Of $1 million, thank you very much.
Thank you. Is that sufficient there? Okay, Nicole, will you call the roll?
Counselor Benedetti.
Yes.
Counselor Doyle.
Yes.
Counselor Guth.
Yes.
Counselor Rose.
Yes.
Mayor Torrey. I'm so sorry, I did.
He would get so mad if I changed my name.
No kidding. That would be weird.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you all very much. Really appreciate it. You're making very, a lot of people very happy.
You just have to do that to the next mayor. Call them Mayor Richards.
Well, I'm sure I will.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Safe journeys home.
Thanks.
And thank you, Liz. Okay, the next item is one of the bigger and more important ones, speaking of lumberyard development. This is Resolution one hundred, series of twenty twenty-five, the lumberyard master development agreement with Gorman and Company. And we have Chris up here speaking. We have Rob hiding in the back. Okay.
And we have special counsel.
And we have special counsel way in the pack.
Thank you, Mayor and counsel. My name's Chris Everson, affordable housing development project manager. I don't have a formal presentation, but I was planning to share my screen just to briefly walk through your memo. Javier, could you make me presenter? Thanks. Thank you. So again, just wanted to walk through this real quick. We did review this. So Resolution one hundred would approve an agreement with Gorman and Company Development for the lumberyard project. We do have on the conference, we have Kimball Krangle, who is the president of Gorman Colorado. If you have any questions for her or if we need any clarifications from Kimball, we can get her on the conference for that. Just wanted to mention a little bit of background. You know, the entitlements for the lumberyard were improved in two thousand twenty-three from two hundred and seventy-seven to up to three hundred and four units. As you know, that consists of three separate buildings, each of around a hundred units or just under a hundred units each. Under the proposed agreement, Gorman would develop the entire lumberyard affordable housing development, including the infrastructure. The city would lease the property to the developer, who would perform the construction, the lease-up, and the ongoing operations as the property manager. The qualifications and leasing process would be governed by the deed restrictions, which would be based on the APSHA regulations. The developer will let us know, will determine how many units they want to set aside for property management staff within six months of this agreement. They are looking at possibly a handful of units, but we will give them more time to determine exactly how many units that will be. Also, within six months, the city should determine any lottery priority for either employment location or essential workers, as well as any lottery priority for the employer partnership program that we talked about and some of the basic terms of that employer partnership program. So we have a work session scheduled for July twenty-first, so just in a couple of weeks to start those discussions. At that time, we will also bring you proposed ballot language for a potential referendum on bond funding for the project. And so the city's contribution as part of this agreement is estimated to be right now two hundred and ten million dollars plus an additional forty million dollars for the infrastructure. So estimated total of two hundred and fifty million dollars. The developer will receive a four percent fee based on the total development cost. And again, the total development cost is above and beyond the city's contribution, right? We saw a little bit of confusion on that in the local paper, sorry, in the Daily News. You know, the numbers shouldn't be added together. The city's contribution is a contribution toward that total estimated project cost of three hundred and sixty million dollars. If the developer needs any modifications to the planned development, they must proceed through the city's formal land use process. They are responsible for securing the building permits and they're responsible for all of the ongoing operating and maintenance costs and all the payments on, you know, any of the debt that they put on the facilities, right? So the city will have a contribution, but each building will have a mortgage and there may be other contributions, other investors as well. That will all be the responsibility of the developer and the city's responsibility will be its initial investment, which may include bond financing, but everything else is handled by the developer. So what else did we have? There are some termination conditions in the agreement. The developer does have an eighteen-month due diligence period wherein either party can terminate. In the event that the developer decides to terminate, there are no sort of fees to the city, but in the event that the city terminates, we would need to reimburse them for all of their costs. So the, there are some different conditions related to termination in the agreement. Those were negotiated by both parties in good faith. Nobody plans to terminate. Nobody sees any big red flags, but those are the necessities in the agreement. I should also add that, you know, the city will have the right to cure any defaults that occurs on the facilities, on any of the financing that the developer puts in place. And again, we have looked at lots of different scenarios. I've looked at like ten different scenarios where you borrow up to seventy million dollars to sort of supplement your two hundred and fifty million dollar investment. And like Pete mentioned, the scenario where you borrow seventy million dollars, there's no lower fund balance in the one fifty fund than around thirty-seven million dollars at the end of two thousand and twenty-seven. And that's if there are no other projects. So if you take on other things, you'll have, you know, up to the thirty million dollar number that Pete mentioned to work with, you know, other initiatives. So you will be then paying off the debt service on the amount of the bond over the course of up to thirty years. And if there's a call option in that bond, you could possibly pay that off in year eleven and save quite a bit of interest. That will rely on a future counsel, a future finance director to do that on your behalf. But we've also looked at the long-term phasing scenario. And the long-term phasing scenario that we looked at, your two hundred and fifty million dollar contribution, instead of paying like maybe twenty-five to thirty million dollars in interest on that, or I should say on the seventy million, right? So that, that, that long-term phasing plan could very easily turn into a three hundred and fifty million dollar investment on the part of the city. So counsel is encouraged to consider the placement of the ballot question this November for the bond funding. And like I said, we will have proposed ballot language in front of you in two weeks. If there are any questions or further clarifications, I'm happy to help with those. Or again, we have Kimball on the line who can help with those as well.
Thank you very much. Let me start with one question. If you could give us a little more detail on the right to cure, that means if they have defaulted on something and bank, or someone is trying to foreclose or collect back some of the asset, we would have the right to step in, pay it, and we would then own that asset?
There would certainly be undulations that we would have to go through in order to cure. We have similar provisions in place at like five seventeen Park Circle, eight oh two West Main Street, four eighty-eight Castle Creek, places where we have similar public-private partnerships that are now in operation.
Yes.
And so there's moving parts. We would need to come up with funds in order to cure and in order to buy out what we need to buy out. So there's a lot of details there and I can't say that I know exactly off the top of my head exactly what it all looks like.
Okay, but we do know there's a process. We do know, I'm trying to think there was a time period when we had an ability to buy out Castle Ridge and the city walked away for various reasons. And I just kind of wanted to make sure we wouldn't end up losing the project overall because we did not have abilities to regain control of the project should it start floundering in some way.
So as we head toward the closing, which I should have mentioned is tentatively planned for mid-two thousand twenty-six, that would precede any construction. We'll know more about what all of the different loan agreements and subordinate loan agreements and all that stuff looks like. So we'll get a lot more clarity on that as we go forward.
Okay, thank you, Chris. Other board member questions? Mr. Guth.
Sure, thank you. Chris, thanks for the presentation. Few questions here. Is there an absolute dollar cap of the city's contributions contemplated in this agreement?
Thanks. You know, some of you were here, some of you weren't here when we had a work session on December second of last year. And we talked about what the developer model looks like. And we hadn't yet selected Gorman as the developer yet. But we knew that in general, you don't get any guarantees until you get to closing, right? And so that was made clear to everyone here and that still stands. So there is at this time, no guarantee that they won't terminate, no guarantee that they won't come back with a number that is so big that we want to terminate. So there are no guarantees at this point, I should say, until we get to that first closing. And I will say this, Kimball has been extremely, I should say, committed to their proposal. They have determined that they, you know, to this point, think they can handle this project. They have the experience and the capability to handle projects like this throughout the state of Colorado. You know, they have proven their expertise to deliver funding sources for projects of this size and scale and nature. And that's what we're working from right now is their, their sort of proven ability to deliver.
Got it. So at the time of the first closing, will there be an absolute dollar cap?
There will be on the first portion that gets delivered, right? And then we talked about in the last work session that there will be a subsequent closing that will nail down the second portion that gets delivered. And there will be a period in time where those efforts are occurring sort of concurrently. And so we get that along the way.
Got it. And is there, you said that if the city elects to terminate, we have to cover their costs. Is there a top set on that cost amount prior to closings?
There are two separate cost elements in the agreement. In terms of, there's no top set on their costs, right? But I mean, we know what it would take to get to their costs. All that will be transparent as well. And so the answer is no, Bill.
I would encourage us to contemplate that and incorporate that. I understand the reason for it. I'm okay with the reason for it. But I would have a really hard time if we get to eighteen months down the road and they just, we decide to terminate because they've come back with a number that's unacceptable to us in the community and we now have a bill for ten million dollars from them.
Well.
I would not accept that. So I'd like to have some sort of reasonable mutually agreed upon top set number that we will reimburse up to X.
I don't know if Kimball's available for comment through the conference on that?
Should be worked out in the moment, but.
Well, if we pass this now, I don't think there's an opportunity to add it afterwards.
I'm not, maybe we shouldn't pass this now.
Well, I know that's, but I'm just trying to say if, if Kimball is available to talk.
But I think that there's a lot of legal ease that would go into a provision like that that should be done thoughtfully, not in the moment.
No, I can understand. I just think.
Well, for example, you know, have they run into that situation and what does it look like?
Yeah.
You know, might be worth discussion.
Sure.
Kimball, are you available?
I am. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Absolutely. If you look through certain sections of the document, for example, section four point three, we do have top end caps about any termination fees along with out-of-pocket expenses. What would be, and you know, that goes through all of section four point three. There are different amounts listed in there that I think are quite modest, to be honest with you. One thing that I could propose is either an absolute cap, and I'd be happy to do that literally on the spot, or since the thing that is not capped is the soft costs associated with it. So our fees are associated, but it says like in four point three eight, may seek repayment of its out-of-pocket expenses together with a termination fee. We'd be happy to provide a budget. We would need a mechanism for approval so that it wouldn't slow us down. But I understand your concern and I'm not opposed to identifying a solution.
Excellent. Maybe let's come back to how to resolve that and hear what everyone else has to say. I have a couple other questions. It looks like your counsel on this was a gentleman named Dalton Kelly from Butler Snow. And I don't know much about him. It seems like he's a bond attorney mostly. Was there a member of his team that joined that has deep experience with public-private partnerships? Was there a different counsel that has that kind of experience? Or have we just been doing this internally plus a bond attorney?
Well, I will say that the city has used Butler Snow extensively on projects like this as well as on bond referendum and things of the like. So Dalton was recommended by Kim Crawford, who's a principal at Butler Snow. And we've previously also used a fellow who's now retired with Butler Snow named Dee Wiser. So he has experience in this area and was recommended basically by the firm who the city has long used for these types of efforts. And so his work was also backed up by the experience of Kim Crawford, the principal who I mentioned. And maybe Pete, anything else you might want to add?
Yeah, I mean, we've definitely used Dee Wiser in the past with Butler Snow. He did retire. But he was basically seen as the expert in Colorado for financing from our end. So all of our tax questions and COPs, things of that nature that we've done in the past, we've, we've used him and his firm and it's been excellent.
Great. They sound like a great resource. But what I didn't hear you say is we have a great resource that's an expert in public-private partnership agreements and master development agreements. Was there anyone involved that is a deep expert specifically in that area?
Well, Dalton has done projects of this nature before. And like I said, his work is also backed up by Kim Crawford, the partner at Butler Snow, who's done this as well. And your special counsel has experience with public-private partnerships as well because we've put three of those in place in the past here at the city.
Okay, thanks for answering my question. It doesn't give me a lot of comfort that we didn't have somebody else. You know, I have tremendous respect for both Jim and Kate. This is not something they live and breathe on a daily basis. And I would have liked to have seen, and I still would like to have see, to see a member of the team that does do this on a day-to-day basis and lives and dies by this.
Can he answer some of this?
Sure, Jim.
Dalton and Kim with Butler Snow did have a, their team has a significant experience, is my understanding. And he indicated that he himself and his associates have worked on these, these type of public-private partnerships. He, he expressed to us, I believe, that he had that experience that you were looking for in expressing. I know he does, he and Kim, and Kim in particular, as Dee did do a lot of bond and tax work. But Dalton had explained to us that he was also bringing in the expertise that I thought you were looking for. And it's not just him. It's a big firm. And granted, they do do a lot of bond work, but they also do that as part of these type of projects.
That's why I started with that question is, I only, you know, a firm like that usually works with a team and that's why I asked. So I want to make sure that we were getting feedback and insight and expertise more than just on the financial side of the equation, which of course is critical. But there's a lot of deal structure. I mean, this is, this is orders of magnitude bigger than the last public-private partnerships that we've done.
True. True.
And I want to make sure that we are very well structured and covered and protected so that we don't have big surprises later. And Jim, if you give me your word that you think that we did have that level of expertise and insight from the council, then I will accept that. But the responses that I got before you came up here did not give me that confidence.
Well, I was pretty comfortable with relying on Butler Snow for a great deal of expertise in negotiating these contracts, not just the bond and the tax aspects, but other aspects of a public-private partnership.
Thank you.
Particularly with Dalton. And I, he's not online, is he?
Let me just ask, Bill, do you think you know someone who we might be able to ask to be a third-party reviewer? Not to, I mean, okay, I was just wondering if you've done that sort of, and do you guys feel that you could do this work, but maybe still ask someone else to be the third set of eyes on it?
Well, we have no problem with doing that. It would, it would set us back a little if you, if you take this out for another review. I know that, for instance, Dee Weiser and Butler Snow had assisted us in the previous public-private partnership. Again, we looked to them for part of a, and their expertise for all of these issues. I, you know, I'm happy to have this reviewed by anybody you wish, but that will take a little time.
No, no, I was just thinking whether those folks could bring in a third set of eyes or anything like that. I mean, it's just, you're absolutely right. It's a large magnitude of money. It's a major endeavor. We've had a lot of time and effort invested in this. And I just, I agree with the dotting every i and crossing every t approach. And so maybe we just ask that they, within-house, also review it more carefully and go over any of the provisions with our finance team and our manager. I mean, I don't, I don't think we need to add a delay to this, but I think saying, we want to make sure everyone's really taking a look at the structure, as you're saying.
Well, we would have to be careful about then what your next step is, because there's a resolution for approval of the contract and directing the manager to execute the contract. If you, there are a couple of ways you could do this, I suppose. One is, is just continue it and provide, give us a little extra time just to confirm your questions, particularly with Butler Snow and the extent of their team. The other would be to approve it conditioned on further review by council. I'm not too sure, I'm not comfortable we do that a lot, but that comfortable in this circumstance.
In this sort of way.
But we, you could do that as part of your, your resolution approval, saying, you know, subject to further review by, by the city manager and city council and further review that the city council, or city attorney, I'm sorry, feels is appropriate.
I just didn't want to leave that one alone yet. I know you might have another question. Pete or Tyler, do you want to weigh in? Would you feel comfortable, you feel comfortable with the contract in front of us today and the firms that have been selected to do this interior work? And, I mean, because it is true, we could either continue this, maybe add it to a special meeting on Monday night and only lose four or five days. But I don't want us to lose two weeks in this timeline, you know?
Yeah, I think staff's happy to proceed at council's pleasure. I don't see a whole lot of advantage of reusing the same firm to re-review the contract. I think based on our council and outside council, we feel, staff feel like we're in a good place with this. However, again, we're happy to proceed at council's pleasure.
Yeah, to clarify, I'm not bringing these questions up or making these comments because I think anyone's being nefarious or trying to take advantage of the city. I think Gorman's a great selection. I'm happy to be working with them. I'm supportive of this project. I've asked for the public-private partnership structure from the beginning. I think it's the right way to go. But I want to make sure that it's structured in the most intelligent way, based on the best experience and the best advice that we can possibly get. That's where I'm coming from here. So that's why I'm asking these questions. Again, Jim, if you think that we've gotten that best advice and that best experience and best guidance on deal structure, more than just on financial structure, I'm comfortable with that. If you think that it makes sense to go back to Butler Snow and say, did we have, are you guys the best at this? Or are we missing a component of our team? If you don't know the answer to that question now, then I would suggest that we should, we should continue this to ask that question of them. And if we need someone to jump in in that capacity, it's going to take some time, but I think it's worth it. This is not, it's not something to get wrong. So I'd sort of go back to you and say, if you have that confidence that they, their team has presented that best possible advice on structure of public-private partnerships, master development agreements, from a municipal's perspective, great. If you, if you can't answer that with confidence, then I'd suggest that we ask them that question.
And there's just some blood you can sign over here.
From a lawyer's standpoint, when you're negotiating contracts like that, it's, you know, it's a, it's a very tough question. And it makes me very nervous to, to, as you say, put the blood on the paper. I would not, in a very conservative manner, I would prefer to go back to Dalton and just ask that question. And just be assured that we'll delay this, especially if we've misunderstood what all of Dalton's input has been, which has been quite significant. I mean, he has been with us since, since we got the first little, we started putting the terms together. Kim actually, Kim Crawford was actually with us at the beginning and then brought Dalton in for additional assistance. Well, she, and she was on sabbatical for a little bit, but, you know, they worked as that team. I'm comfortable with him. I would, well, I certainly would mind just posing the question to him, but I don't know if Chris is happy with that answer.
Yeah. All right. Well, let's let the rest of council sort of contemplate this as, as everyone else answers their question. My last one, and thank you for the responses. My last one is, what happens if Gorman doesn't deliver during the course of construction? Something goes wrong, they walk away from the project? Do we have to, is that just a cure of the construction loan? Is, are there, are there pre-negotiated provisions of if they abandon things or they're screwing up things on, you know, and we don't need to get into the total detail of that. I just want to make sure that that, those types of situations have been contemplated.
So this initial agreement doesn't define all of the terms of the entirety of the development. There are agreements that get put in place prior to closing that defines a great deal of the development, before the first closing, before the second closing. So there are terms and conditions in those agreements that we've not put in place yet. This agreement is sort of a conduit to get to those agreements. So I'll start with that. But those agreements will contain remedies, and they will contain similar penalties and conditions in those agreements that will care for those types of situations. And in those cases, the legal heavy lifting is a lot heavier in those agreements. When you are presented with an ordinance that will ask you to approve some 20 documents, those are the legal documents that have all of the heavy-duty terms, like we talked about the right to cure, about terms and conditions related to various failures on different parts of different parties. So this agreement is a sort of a conduit to get to that stage of the development. So this agreement doesn't contain every contingency about what happens in those situations, but those terms and conditions will be brought forward through the process. And we're going to have conference calls with a half dozen attorneys from different parties on the line. And they negotiate all of those terms on behalf of all of their clients. And so, you know, when we're in front of you with an ordinance approving some 20 agreements, including deed restrictions, including, you know, all sorts of other parts and pieces of the agreement, including lending agreements, subordinate loan agreements, other sort of investor agreements, you know, those are the agreements where all of that sort of heavy-duty information is in, those terms and conditions. So as of right now, there are many different scenarios under which those types of failures on the part of either party could occur, too many to discuss here. And so I would say, in terms of this agreement, all of that is TBD.
Got it. That's helpful to understand. Thank you. I'm fine with that. Within the scope of this agreement, are there termination-for-cause provisions where we might, where we shouldn't incur termination fees if they don't perform?
There are. And there are also termination conditions where the city can terminate as well. So, you know, there's numerous provisions in here. Jim, do you think we should touch on exactly what each one of them are? I mean, we can go back to the documents.
I don't personally need great detail, but I, you know, if I have the reassurance that if we sign this agreement and no work happens over the next six months, and they're not participating in these calls to proceed towards closing, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, you know, fill in the blank on the situation. Again, I'm not being accusatory, and I don't think they'll behave this way. But I am concerned that we have those types of protections in place in a, in a very unlikely circumstance. I'd like to make sure that we can terminate this agreement and not be penalized in a heavy way financially.
I'm comfortable that, you know, if there's a total lack of performance, that our expenses will be minimal. Are you comfortable with that?
Yeah, I am comfortable. We have a number of termination scenarios throughout, throughout this agreement. There are some that, that, you know, clearly for cause, there's ability to terminate. There's a termination for convenience that could have some penalty depending on how long we go before we decide to terminate. There's termination ability of the binding fails. I mean, there, there's a number of circumstances that would and could lead to termination. We've tried to address as many scenarios as we could outline at this point.
Perfect.
It is sometimes impossible to write a perfect agreement. And there are circumstances where you may have a penalty, not, penalty's not necessarily the word, but there's a payment you make just to be able to walk away. But we've tried to address as-
Understood.
-as many scenarios as we could find.
That's satisfactory to me. Thank you for all the thoughtfulness in that, that I just want to make sure that we have exit ramps if in unlikely circumstance they're necessary. So that's it for my questions. You know, maybe we can revisit sort of the top-set termination for, for convenience, out-of-pocket expenses total with, with Gorman. And then let's circle back on this. Do we feel like we've had adequate counsel on the structure of the public-private partnership question? Thanks.
It sounds like to me with those two items this Tuesday night, I don't know if those two questions could be answered in time to just have a special meeting on Monday and point out the confidence gained or not on the quality of the council and the Kimball working towards the idea of a top-set number. And go ahead and continue that this, this evening and finish it up on Monday?
Sure.
Would that be sufficient? I haven't the Monday work session schedule in front of me. Are we super busy? Would it be a long night?
Next week, we do have-
The tax questions.
Three organizations coming to present their tax questions. I anticipate that could run at least an hour, just with presentation and questions.
But it's just those, that's the main topic of that meeting?
There was one other agenda item, I thought, that evening. And I'll have to get back to you.
I would suggest that if you brought this back-
ZMO allotments.
Thank you.
Oh, okay. That's a big discussion as well. Can others all start at 3:30?
Yeah.
Bill, can you start at 3:30?
I think so. I'm going to be traveling, but I think so.
Is that okay with everyone? Okay. Well, let's make that a special meeting that will begin at 3:30 on Monday. And then we will plan to have the information in advance and be able to wrap that up fairly quickly, and then move into our regular work session items.
Good.
Okay.
Does anyone else have any questions or comments on this to make sure they incorporate?
Yeah, no, I was about there, but thank you.
Sorry.
That's okay.
Just wanted to make sure I didn't dominate.
Yeah, any other?
For all of your great questions.
Yeah, really. Experience shows in the construction and management business. Other questions about the contract in general or comments? I think just a few days is well worth it to answer the questions for ourselves, our staff and the public. And I would accept a motion to continue Resolution 100 Series of 2025, the Lumber Yard Master Development Agreement with Gorman and Company to, what is Monday's date?
14th.
The 16th.
14th.
Till July 14th, 2025.
So moved.
Seconded.
Okay. Moved and seconded. Nicole, will you call the roll, please?
Counselor Benedetti?
Yes.
Counselor Doyle?
Yes.
Counselor Guth?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Mayor Richards?
Yes.
Yes.
And that concludes our regular agenda for this evening. We will now have the citations appropriate for executive session via our attorney. We will have our executive session downstairs so that Grassroots will be able to pack up and go home. We will come out of executive sessions downstairs and then dismiss and this meeting downstairs as well. Minutes will be kept, and our attorney will explain the entire process.
Thank you, Mayor. Staff is requesting an executive session tonight pursuant to Colorado revised statutes, Section 24-6-402, Subsection 4, Subsection B, for purposes of conferences with an attorney for the local public body, for purposes of receiving legal advice on the specific legal, on specific legal questions. Subsection 4E, determining positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, developing strategy for negotiations, and instructing negotiators. The specific items of discussion involve the following. The Centennial Owners Association v. the City of Aspen, case number 2015 CV30158 and 2017 CA2099, lease for property located at 455 Rio Grande Place, Aspen, Colorado. The meeting will be recorded, and the recording of the executive session will be maintained by the clerk for not less than 90 days.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion to go on executive session for the stated purposes?
So moved.
Seconded.
It has been moved and seconded. Would you call the roll, Nicole?
Counselor Benedetti?
Yes.
Counselor Doyle?
Yes.
Counselor Guth?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Mayor Richards?
Yes. Thank you. We are going into executive session now. Thank you, Lucy, and thank you, Grassroots TV.